Is Fire Chief Grant Keller in?
Sometime you have. Good evening. So I believe it's Holder, you have the...
Yes.
So the back station sites, both Seacoast, which is in Exeter, there's one in Dover, a few other ones around in Portsmouth, they asked for assistance from area departments. Most of Seacoast towns have already put this in place. So the paper before you is just a MOU with the state of reimbursement and the fact that we can send, well, not volunteers, but members there to assist with the vaccination. So I have four members working on it now. So we talked with Cindy, the easiest way to do it would be detail rate, so the member would get forty-five dollars an hour, just like we're in traffic detail, town will get a sixteen-dollar admin fee. And then this coming weekend, the state is trying to put together, or is putting together, a twelve thousand vaccination site at the New Hampshire Motor Speedway. So I have three or four people that are interested in going to that, to help out with that, because that's not through the National Guard, that's just through the state. So the same MOU would apply to that as well.
It's a great system that they have. I got my first shot at running, and I was, we'll get impressed by how efficient it is.
The National Guard's doing a great job.
Make a motion to approve the state contract for the employees of Town of Kingston to administer vaccinations.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've got a motion to second. Further discussion. You're in the hotel, please.
Olasio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Yes.
I think that's... It's signed already, to be honest with you.
Signed at that floor.
You always, I always sign it. Are they even gonna be around tomorrow?
All day.
Okay, I'll go and get that contract again. Get a couple tweaks, basically, what we fixed here.
Uh, but they're not big tweaks.
No, 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 no. Editorial tweaks.
I like it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next round.
Uh, next up, we have Fox Ridge, Grant Fields, site plan and urban issues discussion.
Charlie Ziltz, SEC Association. Good evening.
Hi, Charlie.
Give the brief. Do you want to line? So last week when we met, we were tasked with trying to get a TRC meeting put together with the intent of putting together a plan, or start working out a plan to finish up the drainage at Fox Ridge. And I told you that Mark had been doing a tremendous amount of work out there for the past, I don't know, six, nine months when we were beyond it. Put down an awful lot of drainage pipes, created a lot of swales and ditch lines, proved the approved plan, and built as much as we possibly could get done from that approved plan. Now he's into areas where there's a lot of things that would interfere with trying to create the same kind of swales and ditches that he was able to put in elsewhere. So that's where, that's basically what we're gonna meet on, is I've got some alternative designs that I think will still work effectively, you know, moving the water from one place to another, as the original design intended, by means of curving, some closed drains, some other means such as that. So we'll get together Thursday morning, I've worked with Mr. Greenwood, we've got that set up. We'll have representatives from the town, as well as from the condo association there with us as well, and just make sure everybody's happy with the design we've come up with. I don't expect this one meeting to resolve all of it, but I think it'd be a pretty good start. I really wanna focus on the roadways more than anything else, particularly, we're gonna be coming into the rainy part of the season, I'd like to see if we can get that hammered out and get Mark busy finishing some of those areas out. I know there's some other areas that Dennis brought up on the sidewalk, those are less of concern, I'd rather get the roadway done first, so that's primarily my focus, and then we can kinda hammer out some of those other things.
Okay.
That's it?
Next question. Where are we at with the paving, Mark? There's been a check left at Cindy's five weeks ago, and application to the other three foundation permits, they've been over there for seven weeks from Robert's office.
So, we just had a meeting with council. Unfortunately, at this point, after releasing those two buildings, we have to follow the court order today, is what we've been advised.
Yeah. So no paving, Mark?
No. I understand the intent there, but what we were told is, the roadmap is within the court order, and we need to adhere to that.
Yeah.
If anyone else has any comments on that, or...
I have a drainage question. My name's Tom Gray, I live at Two Mall, Illinois.
I can't hear you, sir.
My name is Tom...
You're at the stand, identify yourself.
I live at Two Mall, Illinois, and I was wondering about drainage in front of my home, whether they're gonna build a ditch. I have sand and water in the driveway, and I was just wondering what they were gonna do on that side of the street. Mark would probably know better, I don't know.
Well, we planned the TRC meeting, though, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, is that the other side of the road that's encompassing in your plan?
Yeah, there's areas that, some of the driveways have sags in them, and they trap water, and he's, he's...
Yeah.
Is that part of the reconstruction?
Yes.
That's where we talked about maybe doing yard drains and racing the driveways up.
So that's the left side going in?
Yeah, yes, so, that's what, he's working on, that's a little more.
So I have a question, the TRC committee, who's the county representative of town?
We'll have Dennis there. Glenn will be there.
You're invited.
I didn't know, just so we know, who's supposed to be there?
And Richard will be there.
And what time is that on Thursday? What time is that on Thursday?
Nine o'clock.
Okay. Is it here?
It is here.
So when you have a TRC meeting, and you look at drainage issues, you get a pool issue, will that all be spelled out on the site plan, so that we know exactly what you're supposed to do then?
Yeah, so what I put together is, and I don't wanna get too much into the details...
No, I just wanted general information, because I'm not asking for the technical review committees.
So we put together a site plan, and basically what it is, is a detail of all the roadways and the houses and driveways for both Mulligan and Bentgrass. And what we did is, we showed areas where it's more or less has been planned, the areas that have been built per the original site plan, and then we've redlined on the areas that can be built per that plan, and the alternative methods that we'd like to use there. And so that's what we're gonna present at the TRC Thursday, and kinda kick around those ideas, and see what's, what the town's receptive to, the condo representative receptive to, hopefully all of it, and we can get this thing organized.
And you're gonna itemize the list of what needs to be addressed in order to meet the requirements for the project to get to completion, is that correct?
Yeah, and I'll further develop this plan based on, on the results of that TRC meeting, additional details, and then, at some point, the only goal is to get a plan together, and to go back to the planning board with, with everybody in agreement on, on the layout and the drainage design, and have the planning board sign off on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, what I was trying to work out, I think it can still be done in that meeting, is just getting everybody to agree what the issues are.
Yes.
And I think that's probably the best place to start.
It's just, everybody just said, agrees what the problem is, and we can kinda... Right, my expectation is, we're not gonna resolve this in one meeting, but I think it'll be a good start.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you can identify the issues, number one, and then some resolution to some of them, that's a great start.
Thank you.
Well, I have nothing else to add, unless someone else can add? Sounds good. Yeah, um, do you have a letter for you?
Well, I get a question as far as, if I can, we're all done talking about the roadway, about the swimming pool at Seven Bentgrass Circle. I think you guys received a letter dated January nineteenth from Charlie Clary, and is this his response to the letter?
Yes.
Does he say?
Do I?
No. So the way, Charlie, you can correct me on this here, or you can add into this, the letter from the building inspector, is this a cease and desist on the court? I'm not trying to trick you, but it's my understanding, only the district can issue that, not the building inspector.
What we're trying to do is just lay out, what we were discussing last week, is trying to get a handle on all the issues going up there, so...
On, on the swimming pool?
That's not just the swimming pool, that's the issues in total on the project.
Well, I'm just talking about the swimming pool, we already talked about the road, we have TRC meeting to take care of the road.
Yeah.
Here's a separate issue, of which I received a building permit back in July of this year.
Wasn't that rescinded, though? I mean, it's my understanding that was rescinded, Jim.
I got a letter on the fourteenth, I got a letter on the fourteenth of December that I gave to Charlie, and Charlie responded to that in January. There's been no response since then. I'm not gonna turn, he can, if you ask him, or if you wanna ask him, I'm just here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything, the rescinding of the building permit after the work's been done, I don't know what he meant to do there.
Well, the building permit should have been issued before the work was done.
It was. The work wasn't done until the end, end of November, it was issued July thirty-first.
I don't know how you can miss fifty feet, Jim, really.
What do you mean? We didn't miss fifty feet.
Because of the idea, it's my understanding that the pool's in the wrong place.
When the building permit was, when the application for the pool permit was submitted, it was submitted with erroneous property markings. So it was approved because of the property markings, based on what was shown on the plan that was given. It wasn't until it was uncovered that it was on common land, not on...
Not on common land.
It is. And that's where the problem lies. As soon as that came out, with the building permit, the pool permit was revoked.
How do we resolve what's common and what's not?
Correct.
Yeah, so we can, we can get into that, it's, it's not uncommon land, unfortunately, it's unlimited common area, but that's, it's allowed in the common area.
In Kingston, is it allowed in Kingston?
It's allowed, yeah.
I think if you review that letter, these sites, Catherine Hurst, who was not allowed in that area.
Right. So, and then the issue on the, on the cease and desist, which the town wants that issue to cease and desist...
Well, you're saying it's not a cease and desist, you revoked the permit?
Yes.
Well, I don't know what that, there's no such thing as revoking the permit. I don't know what that is. You can do it, I guess you can do it before you start building.
It was, the plan that was brought forward did not show the common area, it was erroneous markings that he approved the plan in the first place because it was listed, he took it on prima facie, that that was accurate information, and it was since found out that it was not accurate information. So what is common, what isn't common, that's what we're trying to figure out, that's why the permit was revoked, okay? Because what came to the town for the permit was not correct, it didn't list it as common areas, it just listed it as a person, so you say, yep, okay, that's within the, the laying, it fit the criteria. Now the question is, what is common area, what isn't?
What do you need, what do you need for me to resolve that? I can, I can do that in five minutes. That's what my, that's what my letter said. I don't know whom I argue with, Robert Stewart?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And Robert addressed that in that package she just gave me, that about the pool.
Yeah, we can, we can resolve in one day.
Because, well, we're, we're relaying secondhand information, essentially, so I think it would be better if you spoke with him directly, and if you need one of us to get involved, please, by all means, reach out, we can do that, but...
It's just a, it's just a whole site.
A whole lot.
It's, it's not a common area, it's a limited common area, it's a difference. And because of people that don't want it, doesn't make it go, what?
It wasn't because of people that want it. I think they're...
I had two people come up to my property and threaten me, I can tell you, they don't want it there, that's why it's in front of you people. I'm sure it was brought to your attention.
I don't know what brought it to our attention to be on, I don't know.
Anyway, I'll talk to the building inspector, that's fine.
Okay.
See you Thursday. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our road agent, Rich Samueler, discussing miscellaneous highway.
So, first thing, so Randy can get out of here, it's Randy Gardner?
Gardner.
Dela, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
We spoke last week, uh, I'm trying not to mess this up for you, but, uh, his son's been deployed, uh, there's a flag that he wants to see flown from one of the flag poles, that's why we're here. I thought, I, I basically, I tell you, I support what he's asking for, but the town building is yours, and so that's why we're here, so take your way right now.
It's the entire company, actually, that's been deployed over to the Middle East, they're at Fort Bliss in Texas right now, waiting to leave Friday, this, the fifth. I got the idea, I had some pictures mailed to me, we belong to what's called FRG, Family Readiness Group, and they had shown Stratford, Mason, Stratum, all the different areas, it's three hundred in total soldiers from the New Hampshire area that are over there, serving, they're in the, they're in the Charlie Company, Third Battalion, One Seventy-Six Infantry Regiment, Eighty-Six Infantry Brigade, the Great Combat Team Mountain Division, and they're in, over there for Operation Spot and Shield, so they were called up, and they're going, and we got one for our house, obviously, and all the parents are doing that, but then they started flying them at the fighter pilots in the different towns. Not everybody, more towns are starting to jump on the door to represent all the soldiers that are over there and from New Hampshire, and I thought it'd be a good thing for our town to do that, for Kingston to do that, not only for my son, but for his entire brigade, so. I approached Rich and Richard, we have to talk to your people, so. I'll supply the flag, no boss, I mean, just as long as it's flying, it's, it's a three-by-five, which is small, it's gotta be smaller than the American flag that's above it, which it is, and, uh, they're there for a year, four hundred days, so it's, it's three, they're, they're planning on a year, but they can, depending on what goes on, if they don't have backup to relieve them, they can be there for four hundred days, so.
So you're here to ask permission to fly the flag?
Yes, it's, it's perfectly legal, I got the, it's okay by the government, by everybody, so.
And for the town of X, we had two of our employees deployed, and we flew the flag in fire pattern. I would support this one hundred percent, and I would leave it up to you, whatever flag pole you want, but the only problem I would see is, I mean, we're limited for flag poles, we just put one up, that's a long ago. If there was five people that requested it, we'd have a problem, but right now, you're the only one who requested it, I would allow it, I would make the motion to, for you to choose which flag pole you want.
Well, actually, Rich had, had, told me that if it was okay, that if you put up a new flag pole, because it would get more exposure there, I would be honored to do that, but that's fine, yeah.
It's a beautiful spot. So, I have to be the killjoy. There is no policy that the town has, and I'm not denigrating anything that you're bringing up, but what it sets precedent as, is any flag can be flown on a town flag pole at the request of someone, and then it gets us into a situation where we have to make judgment calls as to what flags can go up there. And so, the only thing, I, and I just wanted to know what the, if it was one that was sanctioned by the federal government, and, because I know, I'm aware of, you know, obviously, American flag, the state flag, and POW flag are typically ones that are sanctioned and allowed, I just wanna make sure that we're not opening up because someone's got some pet projects.
Who's that one flag that's flown, I've got pictures of the one that's in Stratford, and I've got an actual one here I can open up, but that's, if you wanna see it.
Okay. No, I, I know which one that is.
Okay, all right, you don't need to see it, or?
No, I think what he's saying is, if someone chose to fly another flag that we didn't agree with, can we say no to that? I think he was run it by councilors to see, I think.
Or we at least have to put a policy in place stating...
I say that we approve having this flag put up, and then develop a policy for future submissions to the board of directors.
Just a lot of unintended consequences that I'm trying to...
I would, I would make a motion to...
Yeah, I understand that.
All the POW flags, they...
I don't understand the other towns that are doing it, I don't understand.
They don't have someone thinking ahead.
Yeah, and we just get...
So if someone came in the year, wanted to put up a...
Another one.
Yeah.
Or an Astra flag.
An Astra, yeah, but this is...
Another platoon's flag.
I did the research on that, which you're welcome to have, I'll leave it with you, that it's, it's approved by the Department of Defense, and the UOD, and the...
Yeah, but that, that's not the issue, you have your son's platoon or brigade, it might be somebody else's platoon or brigade, it might be a third one, so we could have multiple flags, all to honor our soldiers away, and we can't say yes to you and no to them, so we gotta have a policy in place and how we handle it, that's, that's what we're going with, not that we question whether we should or shouldn't do it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we approve set flags right here and now as a policy?
You're certainly welcome to make that motion, and I would be hesitant to support it without further research on the matter, just to make sure that we're proceeding down the right path. Again, not questioning the merit of it at all, you know, one thing I've learned in this job is just, for every nice thing we do, there's just a horrible thing that comes and bites us right in the ass right afterwards, and it's just very frustrating, but I try to think of these things before they happen.
Can you give us a week before, so we can research it?
Yeah.
Oh, you, you, take a week.
Yeah, would that be acceptable?
Anything would be acceptable, if I get it to go up, yeah, that'd be fine.
Forget it, I think going up is not the issue.
I don't think it's a matter of supporting it, it's just a matter of making sure that the town isn't opening itself up to something.
Yeah, I may be a little messy, so, yeah, that's fine, I mean...
Got it. Susan, can you put that on the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
And I think Don's already started some research, and we'll just get it all together, and just...
Since there's a policy, we better know if someone else has a policy to do. We're not gonna turn you down, that's, that's...
We're not gonna turn you down.
Right, it's not gonna...
Can you leave some of that documentation with us? It'd be great, thanks.
You give it a read.
Let's give it to Richard.
Should I give him that?
Sure, anything you have, I'm gonna deal with it. Thank you.
My son's information, but I don't think you need that to...
Like we have the new flag pole at the corner of Wildwood Point, that Rich...
Rich had mentioned that, he thought it would get better exposure for the, to be seen, and I, I thought it was a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, I like that, that's, that's a good call.
Yeah, it has to do with the fire station, at the time, I thought we were still flying POW MIA eight flag there, which I just realized was one of them, so it's not flying there, so, I didn't wanna see us taking one flag down and putting another one up, because they're both important. Obviously, POW MIA's, and now, you know, kids are being deployed now, so.
I thank you for your son's service, and I hope you're returned safely.
Yeah, we, we hope you're here. He's, he's been in six years, and he, he just re-upped, so, and just came around, and he's excited for it, we're not so much. He is, so.
Okay, I guess, we're just gonna, we're gonna make the decision the next agenda meeting, okay, that's fine.
So, you can come back this Monday night, or just...
I, I'll be here if you want me to, sure, yeah.
We'll be meeting next Monday, before the elections?
Maybe before election? Thanks. Election.
Next, yeah, it's, it's...
Something to think about.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, we're gonna go ahead and...
Just wanted to copy the contract that you gave them.
Will you all have a copy of my contract?
In, in addition, I reviewed it all today, and we have some tweets, and if you don't mind, we'll talk about some of them, it'll make it easy for you as well, the staff, but that we, let, correct, let's start with his name, in fact, Susan, I just sent that out, that was the only change on the first page. On the second page, row two, and under item C, third one down, or second one down, employer, shop A, it should be for all maintenance of UPS, not or all maintenance of UPS.
Where's that?
On the town vehicle, second one down, item C, last line, employer shop, it says employer shop A or all maintenance, it should be for all maintenance of UPS. You read that last sentence, it doesn't make sense the way it is, unless you're reading the corrupted copy.
You got the corrupted copy.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
I'm just letting you know what I changed.
Okay.
Okay? And then termination, the word just is not included, it should be termination with just cause, and that's, the phrase just cause caused the attorney the greatest consternation, and yet it's pretty clearly spelled out in item five, so when I talked with her, I talked with Rich, we needed to change, add just cause to cause, because it didn't make sense just leaving it at cause, it is just cause. And so that's been corrected, I think it's two places there. In item D, termination of account disability, the first sentence makes absolutely no sense, the town may terminate employee's employment upon his disability, that's not the case, because otherwise, the rest of the clause wouldn't have no ability at all. The issue is that should an employee become, should this employee become disabled, he would push it all into the disability program offered by the town, and be covered accordingly depending on the disability. So what we did was take up the, what was the first sentence, it read, the town may terminate employee's employment upon his disability, that's not the case, and so that was wrong from that one, so we took that out, and rest of it is good. Then in, on page three, under item five, we're trying to be genuine, so it should be, the first sentence should be employee's employment shall be terminated upon his slash or death, not just her death. Just for the information, under A, selection promotion of a party, it does refer to just cause, this, this is to be left in there as well. Under A, selection promotion, last sentence, as just cause, it should be in there. And the only other change is on page four, and it's under number nine, two-thirds of the way down, the last sentence, it originally read, the employee does not overspend the approved expenditures for the fire department, this is where I think it should get, the contracts that's used, and I changed that to highway department slash building maintenance to reflect the Rich's contract.
By the way, I have no problem spending my head in my own, or, or police department, I don't have a problem with that, so.
And that was it, that's why I say, they really didn't substantially change at all, just kinda neatened it up, and I, I would reflect those same changes in Grant's contract, send that to him in the morning, and then we'll wrap that up next, so we get these two done.
So, two other things I just wanna clarify and get out in the open, public session, on page three, item number seven, it refers to RSA one fifty-four five. Now, one fifty-four five is technically like fire department, fire chief, law that was put in, and if we go to the next page, RSA one hundred two, one oh five point, one oh five comma two...
A.
A, is another law that was put in that specifically addresses the issue with police chief, where they are allowed to take your decision and to challenge... where they are allowed to take your decision and challenge it in Superior Court. So you can't fire them. You can. You can terminate the chief of police or the fire chief, but they have the right to bring it before Superior Court judge to hear it, and his decision is final. So those two things are referenced. There is not a road agents law like that. We don't have a good, strong lobby like we have. It's just, that's reality. And so those two things are referred to, and I would expect in tandem with this contract, because that basically gives me the same rights as the chief of police and the fire chief. If I get trouble with the selectmen and I think you're not firing me for just cause, then I would be going to Superior Court and challenging that. And this, I believe, allows that to happen.
And you're probably right on that, but I'm here to say that chances are that the next highway, it will really make this person. That may not necessarily be the case. May not necessarily be the case. Because you throw us under the bus all the time, so we're used to that.
So should we take out that 154?
No, they both stay there. I'm just explaining what it said.
Okay.
It doesn't really make sense because 154 refers to fire department.
Yeah.
Fire department. 105 is the police chief.
So it's saying, saying he has a right to a similar process-
Right, as a police-
As the police chief.
Okay, all right.
So I'm saying-
And that's what I'm saying. That may not necessarily be the case with the next policy.
If you could stay on that page four, if you look at that paragraph that you're talking about, you repeat the same sentence. On the third line down, it says, "The employee has full authority to control the use of all department equipment and vehicles within confines of the rules and procedures of County of Kingston." Then skip down one line, and it says, "The employee has full authority to control the use of all department equipment and vehicles."
That won't hurt, but we should take it out. We can just cross it off.
Just one, okay. And the only thing I'm gonna say is I kind of have an issue with this, but on those two paragraphs, it says two things. It says, "You control the employee's personal files," which really I think the town needs to control that. The H R director should have a copy of it.
And I don't have a problem with that. I think the H R person should have all employee files.
Yes.
But honestly, I think police and fire both control their own personal files.
I understand. I think that's a problem. I brought this up in the first talk.
And that may be an issue with the town. We as a board need to bring all those files in house.
So that's what I'm saying. We should be addressing that in the contracts.
We treat the highway person the same as police and fire.
You want to change that? I'm willing to do that.
I don't know what the thing, I just think we need to maintain, at least have a copy of it, the original. The town in this building needs to have the original.
To live with.
Okay, then the other thing is, I agree with you disciplining your employees, but it gives you the right to pay to remove someone without notifying us. I think that at least-
No, you will not, but if someone comes in and disrespects me as one of my employees, I'm not gonna wait two or three weeks.
No.
My man, as you guys are reading on your Sunday schedule, it's gonna happen right there.
And that's fine. I agree with that. No, I want you to have that authority, but just to notify the board.
Of course.
No, it's not stated. I just don't want a case of cable fire where, you know, the guy is in jail in custody and people are covering his shift and no one even knows it. And just had to say, it actually happened. Bless the Brotherhood. I just, I'm just saying, I would have probably disciplined instantaneously just to notify the board at the earliest opportunity.
Absolutely.
You got that, chief?
God bless the Brotherhood.
That's all I have. Are you okay with that, Rich? Just a notification part of that? You got that all?
I don't, I don't.
All right, so the dog's sentence, notification.
Hey, I just wanted on record that when I was told that, you know, originally I made to the contract, it was like, hey, this has been on tape, you know, three months, and here we are. Four months later, I-
I expressed to the road agent this morning my complete shock and dismay at our board that it took us a year to get this done.
I swore to the mirror, there's no way this'll take. I was, I clearly remember someone looking, this isn't gonna take two weeks either.
I totally agree. I- Doesn't happen too often, but-
You can dig in there too, but I won't get into that.
Yeah, you did write that.
Well, at least you're over. That's the good. So, do you have any other questions on that, Richard?
No, I mean, like I said, Daley, I have my head stuck in my body.
Oh, yes, you guys, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think we can make those changes and have this signed next week, yes?
I don't see any problem with it. I can't believe it took this long, Rich, either. I gotta be honest with you.
We can do that.
So why don't we plan on this? Regardless of the meeting schedule, why don't we plan on signing this up a little bit?
Okay.
Everybody will be relatively in that area.
Is that okay?
Officially have this done by the time this fires.
Keep that date, the ninth, yeah.
So.
Actually, hold it up. We make a now to approve pending revisions. I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Kingston and Rich's Sanoli, pending the amendments as discussed in effective March 9th.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna go along around that fire chief?
What?
Okay, wait, we need a motion before you move on.
Yeah, so he's gonna have to wait six months.
Okay, we got a motion in second. Further discussion?
Another second.
Is that getting it outside?
Oh, it's seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Whoa, 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 please.
Yes.
Alessio?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
It was just a tease. So you got the approval, but you don't have it in hand yet.
So I will operate Graham's accordingly, which is the same, which is on my ears, and email it to him and to the all of you tomorrow. Okay, so you can all review it and pull it apart at that point, make sure I didn't miss anything.
So the one thing, we had a meeting with council earlier when we discussed the mailbox thing. Just as far as about the town's liability in that scenario. We do have a bit of ordinance that explains clearly what is allowed, so you felt-
So that was all taken care of through, wasn't the lawyers' vote tonight, but that was all done with lawyers before. And it was recommended almost per diem by, I don't know, it's N H M A of finance lawyers. And the other one is the, you know, can't change anything in the way of it. We've already used that two or three times to our advantage. It's binding. It's in our way of it. It's not allowed use. We're not responsible for the damage. So I'm glad you backed it, backed that up, but-
Well, so as far as ones that you see as a hazard though, what your concern was for, you know, personal injury or, you know, it would not hurt to identify them to those people. Just send them a copy of the ordinance. But he did not feel we needed to be going around informing people of laws. Their responsibility, to be fair.
And I've got something from federal and state that basically says, they have something they put out, making people aware that if you-
Did you get the last one, Rich?
I think it was like, I'm telling you, it's a little fast.
Yeah, you know. Honestly, being fired at some of those calls as fire department personnel, you know, they're not fun calls to go to. When you have to remove boys and boxes, so.
I think his takeaway was, you know, if there's something that you feel is a potential issue, you should notify them of such.
Okay. I don't have anything else, but tonight, if you got anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library trustees are not here yet. I think these are gonna be on Zoom, so they're gonna be around here.
Okay, that'll bring us to our first public comment section. Public, any comment?
There's nobody answering. Sorry.
All right, uh, old business, right to know policy. Do you get your concerns addressed?
I think that was pretty good, because it's not that. We're talking about this group of parents.
Yeah, you changed the thing we showed up.
Yeah, I just want to look at it. I changed it so that the requests for fire could go to the fire department.
Let me just double check that with Graham. Hey, Graham?
You know-
So I don't think you have reviewed the right to know. So I know the police department mine is kind of specialized, where I can only give certain things to juvenile. And I think yours is the same with medical information. So in this policy, if you're seeing this policy, so they've directed anything under the right to know, that that request goes to that department head to make that.
Yeah, so like you said, same as medical billing, I get all of those requests to lawyers and whatever. So I just prove those to Kelly, she sends it out. They pay us, so same thing to right now.
So it makes sense to just leave those portions the way-
Do you want a copy of this, Graham?
Uh, can you email me a copy tomorrow?
I can, yeah. You can pick one of these.
Yeah, you can print it.
I'm gonna have to buy a brush. Are you kidding me?
All right, I'll undertake a motion on this.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Further discussion. Hearing none. Hold call, both please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Yes.
So you'll send us the final draft, the final document?
Yep.
All right. Uh, new business, revision of employee travel policy. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Thoughts?
The trust is from the eyes over.
So the only thing that, I haven't read this yet. Did you put the changes in there if you had had the shots?
Are you on the travel policy now?
Yes.
Person is fully vaccinated. Fully vaccinated. Is that an in? Did you read that in? Or you didn't put that in?
I didn't. I didn't do anything with it, but I believe, I thought she put in the changes from the state.
What's-
I don't think she put in the changes at all. It's not just, but this is the policy that we have constantly in place.
So there's changes for people that have the complete vaccination.
So from what I understand, this is kind of based off of other departments and the state guidelines. So in New Hampshire, New Hampshire state guidelines, we aren't using testing base like Massachusetts. If you have exposure, if you get a negative test three days later, you can go back to work. New Hampshire wants you to quarantine for 10 days. But, so I was talking to Cindy the other day about what I've gotten from the state is that if you are fully vaccinated, meaning two weeks prior, after the second vaccine, then if you travel, you do not need to quarantine. You only need to self-monitor when you come back.
So that needs to be in the policy.
Okay, and when you self-monitor, is it about three days, five days?
Self-monitor as you go to work, you just, if you get sick, you stay home, you go get a rapid test.
So you don't have any quarantine at all until you're fully vaccinated. Okay. Or two weeks after the fully vaccinated second.
Two weeks.
Okay. That makes sense.
Well, this, what she highlighted is you are asymptomatic, you can quarantine for 10 days upon return unless travel is deemed essential travel. Person is fully vaccinated and at least 14 days have passed since receiving the second dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Or person previously tested positive for active COVID-19 in prior 90 days. So all that's encapsulated.
Except that it says you'd be quarantined for 10 days, and he's saying that's not the case, correct?
That one says that even if you're fully vaccinated, you still have to quarantine for 10 days?
No, it says if you're fully vaccinated and at least 14 days have passed since you last dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, you don't need to quarantine.
Okay, okay. The exceptions are unless indeed essential travel, full quarantine. Okay, got it, got it.
This is day six or seven of the quarantine. That's still in effect. If the test is obtained on day six or seven of the quarantine.
Well, it will be in effect after you vote this out.
It's not in effect.
Yeah, but you still have to, yeah, you still have to quarantine for seven days. If you're not vaccinated, you have to quarantine for seven days. You can go get a test, and that test is gonna take at least two to three days.
Three days, yeah.
Because it's molecular test.
Right.
So we put it down, yes.
That's the latest. I mean, it's changed all the way along, but two or three-
They'll probably change it a little.
Yeah, change again when more people vaccinated.
Correct. Well, actually, it shouldn't, because this lists you, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to really quarantine.
Cindy did leave a note that she would like to know, she would like you to define essential, critical infrastructure employee in that second yellow.
Yeah, she, yeah, define essential, you know, I don't know. That's hard because-
I believe if you, because I ran into this with one of my employees that traveled months ago, that a critical employee by definition from the state is somebody that cannot be replaced. Meaning, I have an employee, but I can hire somebody on overtime to replace that position. That doesn't make him essential and critical. So I don't even know what that would fall under. Uh, may or maybe that, you know, there's no backup to him and he needs to perform his duties?
Well, I think that definition right there is satisfactory enough.
Yeah, because as I told you, the town employees and staff here, they all have backups.
Right.
So it's not like he and your city, everybody's got a backup.
Yeah, but I forget where, if that was from Crime X, I read so many documents. I don't know if that was from Crime X or State or whatever, but it clearly stated that if there was-
That would be essential. Okay, that defines it.
Make a motion to approve the updated employee travel guidance and take effect 3.2 as noted.
Okay, so we're gonna date this for 3.2. 21. Second. I think it's sticking around.
Okay, motion is second. Further discussion. Hold call, both please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
So nothing has changed in that policy, meaning we're not restricting travel. We're still advising against it, but they can still.
Okay, well, I believe fallen state guidelines, you can travel anywhere in New England and be safe. You don't have to quarantine or anything. It's just if you go outside, that's what-
Like Florida.
Just like Florida.
Just like Florida.
I don't see the cussing on here, so maybe you can't do this.
I can only read the first one.
I'll let you know.
No, Kate, and then he-
Um, no. Although stairs or something.
Yes.
All right, so Rebecca, I'm understanding that here you'd like to clarify or at least develop a policy that we have quarterly payments to the library, so we don't have-
Yeah.
A discussion every time you guys need money?
Exactly. So we have it once a year. We talk about it. This is the, this would be the proposed transfer funds the whole entire year. So we're asking for quarterly transfer of appropriation on the first of the month of each quarter. So January and March, that's all in here.
January, March, July, and October.
July and October, yes. So that way, we won't get in- So, that way, um, we won't get into, you know, transferring the whole amount that, you know, if there's any amount at the end of the year, um, that it becomes, you know, a check this week, which is what you're going to get. You're going to get a check this week for the remaining unspent appropriated funds.
It, it's kind of a moot point now to vote next week, but the only recommendation I would make moving forward for next year is July's payment would be the same, the one oh four, one oh three, as the default, because if, if the budget ever didn't get approved, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
In the future.
Right.
This way, I'm just saying, yeah, it doesn't move up just because your budget moves up. You pay default to July and it gets adjusted the next two, three months.
And by the same token, when you encounter the end of the year and you're on expended funds, and in January, that shouldn't be true to the town at that point, because you'll have everything accounted for, am I correct?
Right, so each month, we'll reimburse the town for any payroll right after we got the payroll report. Um, and we'll do that each month, so we'll be essentially caught up. So, December, it'll be about the same amount that you'll be getting each month. It's just you'll have a smaller amount, we'll know exactly.
On a more regular basis?
On a more regular basis, and we'll know exactly, the trustees will know exactly what's in the appropriated funds that are remaining. Whereas right now, we don't know that, um, because funds sit in the town, uh, the town account. Um, we have transfer funds that are given to us. And then there's an amount that's remaining in the, for paying our payroll. And what happens is, we had, um, the remaining payroll funds, which was almost forty-one thousand dollars that was transferred to us. Uh, it was transferred, I think, January twenty-sixth. So, so then we get into, we get the funds transferred back to us. Then we need to check our bank statement to see that hit our bank statement. And then the bookkeeper comes in only twice a month, so then we can't settle that until we're done with February, you know? She's only given two times for the month, so that's why it takes a lot. Doing the, uh, transfer this way, I don't, it won't take as long.
Do we get the transfer yet, or we haven't got the transfer yet?
No, you'll get the check this week, because my, the bookkeeper will be in on Thursday.
And they just got the rest of it.
No, I just, no, I heard that whole part, I was just wondering, yeah.
Yeah, it just takes a while because of settling the books for the year end. Then the bookkeeper comes in and she has to, you know, go through all the accounts, and it just takes two months.
Yeah, Rebecca and I talked about that not too long ago, and I said, why don't we just do a quarterly dispersment? It made sense to do that, and then they had the fun, I mean, it just made it smoother, we don't need to, you shouldn't have the company keep coming back to get the next payment or whatever.
Yeah.
The budget gets approved, consider this little amount you have expended, you get to spend, you return anything unexpended.
I'm making a motion to approve the quarterly transfer to the library department as noted in the document dated February ninth.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second, further discussion.
Reserved statute.
It's off money, it's their money.
It doesn't make too much sense, so obviously, there must be some.
Technically, they, they, they want one, and one fell swoop. So, this helps with cash flow for both sides, and then you have the equation.
You were saying whether we can get it one?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what you said.
I asked if there was any statute in the, in the law that prohibits us from paying that amount.
Now, in fact, Cindy, the reason why we brought up this, because our bookkeeper mentioned that it was, she does the books for Hampstead Library, Dando Library, and she said that's how they do it. So, the other thing is that Cindy did check with the auditor and found out that towns do it all different ways. But the bottom line is, is the trustees through, per the RSA is, they need to, you know, have access to the money, is basically what it says.
Yeah, what I was told is that we have pretty broadly way in how we want to distribute it, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Uh, hold call both please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
And then the other letter was about the funds that we're returning. Did you want to finalize that here, or?
We'll take all the money you want to give us.
Well, the funds that are left, that, that were unexpected during twenty-twenty are thirty-two thousand four seventy-nine, and.
Thank you for turning the money back to us.
Of course. We do everything we can to make that happen. I appreciate your time. Anything else?
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks. Share it with your friends.
Okay, uh, continuing under new business, the revision of use of town property fee structure, they wanted to add Magnuson Field onto that. Uh, some who's for evidence, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you missed that.
Follow up, like, the room was knit, rec. department.
Correct, yes. Yeah, um, there were some corrections there, did you make those corrections?
Did you, did you get the sheet correction thing?
Yeah, and I put those in.
Put these in, okay.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd be concerned about Magnuson Field is input from Little League. I mean, they're primary user of it.
Um, I, I think.
What about the carnage? Should ask.
It's not a, it's not a issue anymore.
Uh, could be.
Um, yeah, I would just be concerned, because they have first writer, I, I think first writer refusal is Little League, and I always consulted them before, the only thing, but.
Do you want to catch up with them and we can review this at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so put it back on the agenda for.
So, this is the latest revised?
Yeah. And the fee structure, that was Paul, he wanted to know, um, because he's talking to these teams already, what, what the fee should be. And those were suggestions from him for the profit teams to pay.
Um, I, you wanted to see about the fee now or no, which is, I'm just asking that if they have any issues with it.
I don't have any problem with the fee schedule, yeah, I just, you know, you wouldn't ask, does the, does the, um, the folks softball league, the news magazine follow the Kingston on profit, I would say so.
Well, you know what, you don't, Elsa's not here, Colwell Field's not on here.
That's correct, isn't it? And it should be.
Alright, so check, let's check, let's check, would you check them all as well as the, yeah, check everything first and then see if it's.
Because Colwell, anything else went missing? Colwell Field and the, well, the rec center is on there, and that includes use of field, I would guess, but.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else that we haven't seen.
Well, I mean, I prefer.
We'll try to.
Well, I think they would come out and call.
Hey, if you're going to put fear grounds, then bring some ATVs and a mud, grass drag.
We'll make special fees if anyone wants to use the fair ground, don't you worry.
Alright, so Kevin, you're taking that?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Excellent.
Alright, um, key liaisons on reports.
Well, we've got the voting coming up on the night. We have, uh, we, assuming we have any absentee ballots back in by Friday, we'll process them beginning at one o'clock on this government Friday. I would, I'll be there to represent the board of selectmen if we need to do that. There's been a major screw up on the ballot, I'm sure you know about that, with the test school ballots, because one of the candidates was not a legally registered voter, he is now, but he was at the time when the filing, it was Mr. Anthony, he thought he was, and it turns out unfortunately that he wasn't, but he still filed, filed for the position, he's running as a write-in candidate, the school has had to redo the ballots. We should have it tomorrow. So, it's been a real ajah, is the right word for that, so. But they're back, hopefully they'll be back tomorrow, and then everything will go as normal from this point forward. So, they had to reprint the school district ballots, is what happened.
What's your expense?
I don't know, the school pays that one. Still our tax dollars, and.
Wow.
Is that just the other, stop it. Just comes out of the left-hand pocket instead of the right-hand pocket.
Um, I will, I'm going to throw it out based on discussion with council, is that something we want to do? Because I was waiting to hear back from the planning board about issues with the, the piece of parcels of property that we're considering getting rid of. We're not getting rid of, disposal of, taking off the town's role and put it into the taxpayer role. Is that something, including that, those two parcels on, um, Great Pond, do we want to entertain that or no? I have another discussion another night.
I, I think we need to talk about it a little bit more, so that we're clear in our minds what we're going to do. Something like that, the fact that when two of ours want the same pieces, that's a problem. And so either we put it out to bid and the highest one gets it, that's one thing. Or you cut it in half and each get half for a set amount price, that's another.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, the only thing is I don't want to put it, I mean, oh, I guess, I guess you can't fault council, if someone else wants a bid, but it has to be spelled out. That is not a buildable lot, that, you know, if someone wants to go buy it, they can, but it has to be.
I think we need to kick that can around a little bit ourselves, is what we need to do.
I think we've been kicking this around for a long time, and I'm listening to them whipping around tonight.
I know, I know that, I, I, maybe the other pieces, but this one, I think, you know.
I think what he, his point is, and I was opposed to giving any on anything, I, I feel that that is the most fair and equitable way to disperse of that property and absolve the town of any liability. It checks all the blocks, and if we get fifty dollars for it, that's fifty dollars we didn't have, and now it's on the tax rolls, yes.
So, you put it out to bid, then?
We, no, we need to merge the lot, all, all three of those lots need to be merged into one.
Yeah.
And then it needs to be recorded as a non-buildable lot. It's no longer a lot of record, so nobody can put a house in it. And whoever wants to bid at it can bid on it.
I would throw in there that any and all expenses, because they're not deeded pieces of property. So, we're going to have to generate some deeds for those, which means probably some surveying. So, I would suggest, whatever we're going, the highest bidder plus town's expenses to run them.
Well, we could put it as a reserve, okay, in the auction, so we have to be at least covering our expenses in, in that, and then.
Oh, okay.
Because they're not, they're not deeded pieces of land, so we're going to have to create deeds by doing that, we're going to have to survey it, right? To come up with that. Yeah, so that's going to be an expense.
Right.
But I did, I did, we need to get on this.
No, I, I, I agree, but every time we move forward, we get a step back, and it's, it's frustrated for me too, that's why I bring it up tonight, um.
So, so I would suggest to make sure that we're going to be able to uphold it, that we want to have, however we're going to create those deeds, we need to have, probably Dennis could now look at it and say, there isn't a problem with the land, so we can do it, right? To make that deed.
Well, he already did for that.
Okay.
Him and Rich already looked at that one.
And they, but they looked at the, okay.
Yeah, and that, that, that was, that, that thing, it's just of the essence, I think you looked at it too, right? It's the trees on it, it is.
So, make a motion to do that lot out of sequence right now.
Okay.
Let's do it, we looked at it, and he thinks he can create the deed for that piece of land, that we want to put it up to auction.
Well, I guess, so let's, let's say before we do that, okay, is there's the other parcel of property, and it's not such an urgent rush as this one, because of the trees. But there's the other piece of property on Great Pond where the two paper roads that the logger went in and took down the thing. That person has expressed interest. Do we want to do the same thing to say he has to do, uh, uh, it has to go to auction, or do we say a sealed bid for him?
I think every.
Have it go to auction?
Auction is a clean process.
Okay.
We don't show any favor, or it just keeps impartiality for the town, and, and.
Okay.
It gives anybody the opportunity, if there's a rock or they're close to their wife, who knows, you know?
So, I mean, at this point, the three tracks, the, the one between these two neighbors, the one, the logger one, and the one that was, came forward last week. Those three tracks of land, we go up to auction for, and I will notify those three landowners.
So, we need to have Dennis look at all three of them to create the deed.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
Do you need to hear back from planning and conservation persons?
Yes.
As you're required to.
Yes.
So.
Remind him the day to check it out.
Well, we can still get Dennis going, we need to prepare it, we can put a notice in the paper or whatever, but for at least those three.
Can't put a notice until you get the planning and conservation stuff back.
Yeah.
Because if there's a glitch, you want to find out.
Well, the glitch seems to be only with the Pilgrim Passage.
I wouldn't assume that for anything.
What?
I wouldn't assume that, you don't know if there's a glitch.
What Dennis is going to find, that's why Dennis needs to.
Alright, I'll contact Dennis on that as well.
Are there other parcels that we're looking to look at?
I haven't looked at the tax map per se, we can, I, we can pull the tax map, or maybe I'll have, when I talk to Dennis, I'll have him peruse that and look at any.
I'm just thinking an auctioneer is probably going to want to do as many as possible.
Well, have you ever looked at the map and how much property the town owns that's unused?
I'm thinking that one in parallel.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
No, I'm saying for Great Pond, just the Great Pond area, have Dennis take a look at that for now.
Yeah, that's fine, it's probably better to do a small number, zero.
Let me, let me, yeah, let me have him look at any thing that's on Great Pond.
Because I'll tell you, there are a ton of little pieces of land that, that people haven't paid taxes on, and we took, or there's a number.
Alright.
Yeah, this is a good.
I will notify those people, okay, and, yeah.
Okay. Don, do you have anything for committee liaison?
No.
I have nothing, um.
Second public comment, anyone?
Is that me?
Adam's here.
I, I see improvement over there.
I hear someone.
Yeah, he's there.
I didn't see you coming. Do you need something, or no? I have to do. Um, so there is an appointment against the days committee.
Yeah.
Um.
Make a motion to approve the appointment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. You can express your support of this if I sign on the piece of paper too.
Yeah, I already did.
Oh, okay, I thought it had to be my motion.
I think.
I already signed it.
It's probably appropriate that you do move it, I think.
Fair enough, alright, uh, so, motion for Donna Delor to, he thinks today's committee.
Yeah.
Roll call both please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
St. James?
So, this gentleman got the appropriate paperwork?
Yes, that, that's the one we've been waiting on for a long time, it finally came in, it does say.
Uh, payment request. We're good with this?
How does our cable balance? It's a matter of a pool that was taken out.
Yeah.
Uh, facility use for the Vanscan.
He's the, he's the one.
Oh, that's, that's in June, I would, I would recommend that we wait one week, two weeks, until this new policy goes into place.
Over the COVID week?
Uh, no.
Of the end of the season?
Use of town property fees.
Okay.
So, wait until that's in place, wait till you come back with that.
I'm sorry, I'm.
So, wait till you approve the.
Loop all. Yes. That's my recommendation.
There is a thing here from Allen.
Yeah, hold on, let him finish on this one.
Okay, do you want to just keep this on the agenda? Do you want to just keep this on the agenda for next meeting?
On that particular exemption, it's not the owner of record that's applying for it. And I don't know if the previous owner of record was the right, was. The previous owner, I believe, had a blind exemption. If it's the right property, it's the same property. I'm not sure. I don't know what address they used to be on. But it looked like from this application that it's a renter of that house that's seeking the blind exemption on the taxes. And I don't think it conveys to the renter. I think the owner gets the exemption, not the renter.
Correct.
And so, but I'm not sure that that property is owned by who I think it might have been.
So what the assessment, I'll just read this one. However, the applicant, the applicant has been, the application has been filed in a timely manner and is considered complete. However, the applicant does not meet the ownership requirements under RSA seventy-two, seventy-one, three-three. Hi. As the applicant states, not on the deed for the property reported at Rockingham County Sheriff's Department deeds. So.
So it's easy to deny the request.
But they said he wanted to sign, is that the one that said not to sign?
Correct. Well, unless we disagreed with his ruling. So his ruling is we should not sign.
And that makes sense because this is someone that lives in the home that's not, that, that doesn't have a handicap.
Correct. So, so if we need a motion add, you want to?
Just don't sign it.
Okay.
Um, someone's due some payment. It's all those. Take a motion on the minutes.
Move to forty-seven minutes as quoted.
Second. Okay, motion second, uh.
Are they here?
Yeah, they were.
Oh, the minutes I sent.
I got the number.
Yeah.
Oh, we have, yeah, we, or you just emailed.
Yeah, gotta let me know which way you want to go. I used to copy them all and I just told, don't copy them all, we've seen them. So if you want copies in your packet, I sort of have to do that.
I don't need, I agree, I do need to make a note to us, so. But Kevin doesn't, Kevin might be hard copy.
I can't, it's like reading on my phone just doesn't work and I don't have a computer here. It's like, I just like to have the thing to read, but.
Just gotta let, gotta let me know.
Oh, you see the one in our office?
What office?
What, I can't hear you, the acoustic.
So I, I just came across this number, I asked this when Graham was here. But, um, this is Graham's appointment as the emergency management try director.
Don just brought that up this evening, wanting to know if they would all need to be rehired. They are indefinite.
Very rich myself.
They're indefinite appointments.
So, yeah, Rich and, Rich and mine are indefinite. And Graham got one year to first time around.
He had a temporary, when he was temporary.
So the three of us are emergency management directors who all work together?
I guess my question on this, I was thinking about this when we did the Seabrook trial. I mean, in a real life scenario, wouldn't he be on site of, if there were a fire situation where he.
Yeah, so, so the reason why we have try directors, so if it's some kind of a fire emergency or whatever, he would be out in the field generally. And either Rich or I would take it, depending on, so, so you've always got an emergency management director available, depending on what the situation is.
I guess I'm wondering, is there someone who is definite? Again, worst case scenario where you're handling a masthead, the accident, Rich is doing traffic control on that and, and Graham's guys are holding bodies out or whatever. Who's back managing the office? And.
It could be, it could be one of his deputy chiefs, it could be someone from the PD, someone from Rich's office.
So what it is to be appoint someone to be back home, minding the store?
So generally, it's always been one of the, one of the three of us will take over, even on a, on a drill, a Seabrook drill or something. So generally, it's one of the three of us.
I, I, I just, way back in the day, it was Norm Hurley and John Collins.
Yeah.
And now you've got three, and I think all three are capable. I don't think we need a fourth. You know, I, I think it works great with the three, because they're all in emergency management itself, so. The odds of them all, although I just heard a thing the other day, Seabrook wants you to come up with a plan that if you had to evacuate, we were gonna set up town government.
Oh, we'll do the same thing we do for the school, send everybody to Salem and wait to, but, wait for the buses to come from Manchester to take everybody to Salem.
Yeah, they, they still have a sort of manager.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, but no, they want to know where the town is gonna set up like government. Like, we're gonna go to Bethune, Massachusetts and set up government in Bethune, Massachusetts. It's like, it's just crazy. It's like, because you can't go to Lancaster.
We're gonna go down to a Fox Place down in Lake.
All right, uh, that.
No.
Is all we have?
No, we have a note from Ellen.
Ah.
So about Tori assisting him down.
Yeah, um, so Ellen's supposed to notice, um, she's looking for her sobriety, I agree, they're gonna be reprocessing the X and T ballots for voting. Um, when is it?
Friday at one o'clock, if we have any.
So the town is already closed, uh, and she asking for assistance was done in the previous election. Um, also, the town clerk stayed short of people who needed to work the election. So again, we're looking, they're looking at you, Tori, she's training, she's president. Um. So what I said to Ellen, I want to know if the board agrees with me. Due to COVID, there are a lot of people who typically work the polls who don't want to work the polls right now, understandably. So in this instance, I feel it's worthwhile for her to be utilized for that. I, I just told Ellen that when things are normal again, she shouldn't be counted out for that. And do this, count your.
Yep, it makes sense.
And then the other question was, um, obviously, since all the town clerk, tax collector people and Tori were gone, Susan and Cindy will be the only ones in the town hall. So just more for confusion save for people. Close the town hall. Close the town hall on the voting day and. I mean, Susan and Cindy still need your work, but they, they will be open to vote, it just makes sense. I, I know I have to run back after the election, because they run back here for five minutes and drive one thing in. Going in, someone pulled out the one and know if they came here to vote and walking out, someone came out and I'm thinking, it's every. I'm like, oh, fifteen years ago, maybe, but. So, um, does anybody have an issue with us closing through? Voting. Um, and so I guess the other question in line with that is, um, if we even added four?
What, what do we have on the agenda for next?
Um, we had the flag person and the, the wedding, that's got time. You know, the.
Same to that.
That's all I wrote down so far. I don't have anybody.
I made a recommendation, don't. Probably my recommendation, because we need to do some stuff early in the morning, setting up some stuff. Up and up.
All right.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, and you started that letter, you said.
Yeah, so what was driven by that was, um, in the inspectors meeting, there is a Sears logistics is no longer in the.
Correct.
Costco has taken over work that Sears took over for them in order to see. Costco has filled in that, however, they don't have business.
Yeah, so it went from Sears originally, from. American, okay, I want Sears. Sears then started delivering some Costco stuff for opinions. Costco bought out Sears to actually open it up. So it's Costco's. So their renting is over. They're not much of a name. Costco's name.
Does it have any impact?
No, it has nothing to do with that. It's just in the course of that process in the planning board, it was found that there is a new tenant in the place of. So what this, you know, since we asked everybody to vote in the care of town, there's a new tenant there. Submit to the planning board, just to change the occupancy. That's what this is. So this actually gets to go to the planning board.
Ellen.
Ellen, they have to do that somewhere, but it's just a. Yeah. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
I just have one quick.
You can go.
No, it's, it's. Um, I received a request, as I do every year, for Reach the Beach. And they want to do their Reach the Beach thing at the school again, and make the school. Um, as I do every year, I work with them on traffic safety, you know, offices across the highway and all of that. They will use the state's guidelines for rate basis, for basis. They're planning it now, but may have to pull it back. Just want to make sure the board is okay with moving forward as they do every year with them.
Yeah, it's spaced out, there's not anything that would interfere with the COVID. I, they can do it and that's the beginning of getting that one off.
No, I just wanted to make sure the board is okay with.
Can we go back to the minutes? Did we end up approving the minutes or?
No, we did.
There was no vote?
No vote, no. Do you want to vote?
I just want to, I was gonna say, I wasn't really here.
I can say yes. And Phil can say yes, and Chuck can say yes.
Alessio, Briggs and Coons are yes?
Yes.
Why you're switched?
So, um, that situation on TD Bank leaving.
Yeah.
That, that other bank that's still in the board.
Oh, good.
Still in the board. Hopefully that will be successful.
What other bank is that?
Or you can tell me after, I guess, because I just, I was.
We didn't talk to Kevin yet.
I didn't.
All right. Um, can I pause on that? All right, so I've got the evaluations here. I'd like to take ten minutes, since we are finishing early, I'd like to lay out the calendar of events.
Sure.
For this, so that there's no question I have with this.
Okay.
So. Um. Are we still live right now or do you want me to stop?
Yes, we are live.
We're still live. Sorry, there's no live. Um. All right. So. These evaluations are for the entirety of last year. So. What I'd like to do is tonight, just to sign everybody out. So who's evaluating whom? I don't think there should be any changes from last year. Um, and then when we're gonna have these turned in by. So the way we can do it is the way we've done it in the past is we've met with the, we've written the evaluations, we've met with the person, um, done the evaluation, then brought it back before the board and then we do the pay for, pay for performance evaluation. I'm looking at you because I'm listening.
No, listen.
Here. Um. So then the board meets, discusses the evaluation and the pay for performance numbers reached up. Is that pretty much how it goes? I know you've had it.
Well, let's take a step back. You meet with the per, person, but it doesn't, it doesn't constitute it, right? The board comes back and makes a decision together in totality. It's not one person making, I'm not doing the fire chief and come back and hey, and say, hey, I gave you this. You sit with the fire chief, maybe talk with him, then comes back to the board and the board discusses what you have.
So you sit with the employee that you're assigned. Review and go through the evaluation for, and with that at the time, live. And then you bring those results back to this group, share the review with each other. At that point, the budget should have been passed and we know what we have available for funds. We make a collective decision on what the rate of pay, the rate of, uh, pay for performance increases going to be. Or any other increase. Sign off, pretty much.
So we'll do another evaluation after the board is met, come up with the pay for performance title. And that's the final evaluation.
So we do two of them with the board. One with the, after our initial review with the employee. And then we collectively get those reviews and then we make a decision on who's going to be again to make, to disseminate that, right?
So I think probably the first one should be a review of the previous evaluation with the employee. We have copies of those, correct?
I'm sure Cindy does.
Okay. Um, so it would be getting those evaluations, meeting with the employees, discussing how, you know, there should have been things that were goals and areas to work on. Discuss that. From that meeting, the final evaluation we win. And then we'll have a work session day or end of the week where we review all these. And the pay for performance is attached at that time. And then we'll do a final meeting with the employee and complete the evaluation. They can have their report on it and assign their employee then that they're notified at that time. So, um.
Then after that, they have to go through the same process with their staff.
So how it's worked in the past is the department heads will come in and it's two separate, I, I see it as two separate meetings. We meet all our people and then we meet with the department heads.
Yes.
And what we'll need to do is establish what the criteria for the department heads is. You have X amount of percentage to award to your people. And we've given that authority to them to.
Well, not, they, they bring it to us, they tell us what they would like.
Two percent of budget, they get two percent for their total amount. How they distribute that total amount, is that to their.
Yes.
And what else?
Um, I do think we need. We've done percentages in the past. Would a lump sum number be more effective or do we want to stick with percentages?
Um, I think we, before they do anything, before they get the wrong impression, issue comes directly. I would say the percentage and a lump sum amount. Give them both so that they have, they understand. We're granting you a two percent raise doesn't mean that, you know, everyone gets a two percent, but your total dollar amount is this. And it's basically two percent of their total payroll, basically. I think you give them both.
They need, I did say we should give each department head a dollar amount as to what is available for dispersment for increases. That that dollar amount represents whatever I stated, a month, two percent, three percent. I think it was two, if I'm correct.
So I think we end up giving.
Whenever we budget, we budget their percentage and sure.
Yeah, I know we did. I can't remember what it was after, because we, there was discussion back and forth on it. We'd have to ask Cindy what it ended up being. What the percentage. And so I'd say I could pass it back to Cindy to give the percent. And then a dollar on.
What that just said represents in terms of their payroll budget.
Yeah.
But we also need to drill it down to it's from this date. Because it's happening before and someone's like, well, it's three percent, but we're not taking this until June, so technically it's three point two.
Exactly. No, I think we need to pick, that's, that's why I appreciate you doing this right now, so that we're.
Well, that's what it should be.
Yeah, I think we should.
Normally you expect two new selectmen to come on, more than that, we don't expect that.
We're, we're, right now, we're in February, we're in March. So I think it should be effective April first. Does that give us enough time, one month? So.
It does for the department.
We'll look at a calendar, what is the first, you know, pay period in April? I don't know.
Do they pay by month or is that what you pay?
Um, Friday's the second of April, you know?
Well, it doesn't, I mean, you can make it retroactive from April.
You can, but it, it just, it, it, we've been, people kind of get that and, you know, what's taking so long? I think.
I think, I think April is quicker, I think if you make it retro to April, so.
Well, the department head is gonna be easy to make an effective April one. I think that's, or April second, whatever that, pick a date, if it's the second is a Friday.
April second, so anything should be effective.
Believe it or not, let's figure it on Monday. So if we give effective April first, that week would be the week of April, well, the department.
Well, what's that pay period for? Make it April fifth enough, you're looking for a Monday. Well, what's if pay period fall, make it April 5th then, after you're looking for a Monday.
I don't know what they pay here, but you're gonna have seven weeks, don't do it in the middle of the week. Don't pick a, our pay, or one that's a Thursday, I don't wanna, I want either, we be giving Monday, May, whatever.
I think the week starts on Sunday, I'm not sure, but.
If the second is a Friday, Monday is the fifth, it's three days.
What are you saying, the pay, pay, payroll stops on the third, on Saturday, so.
Okay, so April 3rd would be the effective day?
Yeah.
All right. Um, we're not meeting next week. Uh, so that would be the 15th is our next meeting, I think at the 15th, Cindy can have the previous evaluations, and the blanks.
Yes.
Well, the blank, I got the.
There's no reason we shouldn't get it before you.
Yeah, we can come in this week, you know, Friday, well, it's cool, it's Friday.
Well, what I, what I think we need to do, let's get the old evaluations if we can.
Yeah.
And, do you wanna plan on the 15th is when we, we'll already met with our people and done all that, and then?
I'd like to try that, let me do that, I mean, technically, there, Cindy will be working Tuesday, there won't be any public traffic, she should be able to pull those out and get the, and know to the, so as a gym to us, in envelopes.
Yeah.
So that we have another, it won't be quite a, before you, why not this week?
Yes, I'm sorry, I agree. If you get the blank ones, I can come by and get, you know, wherever I gotta get there.
Get the old ones and get the blank ones, and then that's.
Okay, so let's plan on the 15th, you've met with all your people.
Yeah.
You've reviewed the old evaluation, and you have the new one generally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only two or three people each, right? It's not a lot.
Then up to the, up to the employees.
Well, then, okay, right, that's, that's the next step, I would give that a little longer, 'cause they got more people to work with. So you might give that to April 15th.
All right, I have Susan. And you have.
Could be made first.
Yes, you had, um, I, we wanna keep it the same people, right, so we have to go post some standard here.
You're gonna pull a gun on me again?
Yeah.
Rich is still a lot of our. Can we go after the election?
Susan, you to Tori, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, Adam. Adam, Ellen. We, Ellen. Dave, I have Cindy.
Who's Cindy? Richard.
Graham.
Me.
I didn't get any others though.
Tom.
I only recorded.
And Robert.
So I can be.
Uh, you have Rich. We need one for Rich now, that he's an employee.
Uh, no, 'cause he was, was an employee back then, that's next year.
Yeah, but technically, he's gonna get a raise, I, I think we should go through it.
I gave him that evaluation when I was, at least.
I would give him an evaluation.
All right, you can have Robert Stewart, Thomas, Dave, or Susan.
You got four?
Yeah, you want to?
Sure.
I have things to say.
Okay, I'll take one?
No, I can do that.
Okay.
The inspectors are easy, they don't care what I say anyway, so. So, that's very, thank you, um. You need Tammy, that's pretty.
I didn't need Amy, 'cause I just came on board.
All right.
But Tammy's elected.
She's elected.
Yep.
But still, sure, yeah. I don't mind doing Tammy, I mean, that's Rich, that's supposed to be Rich, right?
Uh, so I have Cindy and Paul for Richard.
Okay, and not that Tammy. Might be a weird conflict, it's what it is, but it's great. Keep me honest.
And Susan does Tori.
Yep.
What value did you last year?
Mark.
I, I can't remember, I think.
Yeah, but.
Well, Mark was stupid, then last year, he was already, I don't know.
Mark wasn't here last year.
'Cause I can't. I think it was Patty or Richard, does that make sense?
Evaluating his chairman?
No, typically the chairman would evaluate, Susan.
Oh, I see.
So. I, I don't think I did that.
No, I think Richard Wilson.
So you got the list there? So you know who to tell?
I did, it's good.
So.
You wanna talk more about that?
Yes.
She's waiting for a call.
Yep.
That's a good call, so we will need to go to a little bit of a, okay.
All right. Um, all right, so the 15th.
Having back to the 15th, that means.
All right, so we need to have a day, we're gonna be reviewing all these.
Rich, say who he is. Rich, say. You need to tell Cindy, Susan, who you are reviewer, so that she can get, I, I think if she gets the list, she can tell Cindy to get, and let us know when she's gonna go.
I have Robert, Tom, Dave, and you. Rich Wilson has Cindy and Paul Martin.
You have?
I have, uh, Ellen.
I have the two chiefs.
Be a lot of tickets given out this week.
Not feeling good about this.
I wouldn't give out any if I were you.
Well, we can't hear Saint Patrick's Day.
Well, that's the 17th.
What about the 19th?
What about the 19th?
Be on the 19th to go with these.
15th is a Monday, Saint Patrick's Day is the 17th.
Yeah, you, uh, when you return the day, he said he wanted a day, and they had it counted by the 15th.
We're gonna have another meeting between Natalie.
No, we have a meeting on the fif, no, we're not gonna.
Oh, on the 15th, right.
So we can even do the day up to 15th?
That would work.
In the morning?
That Monday, I could do that. Monday, the day for everybody.
It is.
Yeah. Would you want to say, like, 10 o'clock or something?
Yeah.
You're all gonna be here?
Yeah. That won't conflict with anybody else coming in, in the morning.
Yeah.
All right, Monday, 15th, at 10. All right, um. And then the department heads.
We could let them know when we meet with them, that they have to have their evaluations done for.
If, if we, if we did that 15th with the effective date of April 1st, let them have till April 15th, so they're about effective May 1st. So that they do their evaluations before they get the raises, and gets it done in a timely fashion. Is that too short a time period?
Well, I think, as, so by the 15th, all the department heads will be aware of what's expected.
Yeah.
There'll be order of Monday, if you want. Yeah, I don't see needing one to do that, it's not like it's a surprise.
No.
You think that's unrealistic on, or? So that would put us, that would put us at the 29th of March. For them to come in.
And we could already tell them, we'll have Cindy Kraft letters for all the department heads of the dollar amount they have, stating raises will be retro to April 5th, not April 5th, um, we said, April, what was the Sunday, 3rd, 3rd, April 3rd, April 3rd.
Use a paper instead of saying.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. So anything, you know, it will be effective the day.
So you got, what's, what's your pay period, Sunday to Saturday?
Midnight, midnight, Friday.
So it's Saturday to?
Saturday to Friday. To Friday, Saturday to Friday.
Saturday to Friday.
So it'll be effective that, March, on April 3rd, April 3rd, and, you know, um, they have to have their evaluations to us by, you wanna say March 29th?
Yeah, why don't we meet at 10 o'clock?
Hey, but okay, does that work for a little 29th? I don't lock the calendar today, I'm.
March 29th.
Let's do it and get it over, 'cause otherwise it's gonna drag up.
Ask Cindy just to send out direct to the department heads, they could, she could send that information right to department heads.
Yeah, I think that's great. 'Cause we spent a lot of time all throughout the, it seemed like forever,
Yeah.
on employee raises and merit and all that other stuff, let's bite the bullet and get it done.
Yeah, well, that's, that's something people mad at us, because we drag it and we kick it.
I don't blame them, I don't blame them.
What time we meeting on that day?
Pentagon.
Well, so the budget passes, and it makes it real easy.
We still got paid, we still got the raises.
We still got the raises.
All right, uh, I do one non-public writing. So that will conclude this evening's televised portion, thank you for joining us. What's a non-public for? Uh, a. Legal? We done that?
Well, I wanna, before we turn off, I just wanna state what we're going to non-public for, if, just.